Is this Tuesday? It's called order, the Sparks City Council Meeting of May 29, 2012 with a roll call, please.
Mayor Martini.
Here.
City Clerk Patterson here. Council members Ratty.
Here.
Lawson absent. Smith.
Here.
Carrigan.
Here.
Schmidt.
Here.
Assistant City Manager Driscoll.
Here.
City Attorney Adams.
Here.
We have a quorum.
Okay, if you don't rise for the invocation, please, we have Tom White from the Church of Jesus Christ of Latter-day Saints, welcome. Nice tie.
Thank you. Our Father in Heaven, we are grateful to meet here this day with our city council of this great city, and we pray that thou will bless them with the wisdom and discernment they need to conduct the affairs of our city. We ask those that thou will be with those who are here to present business, to present concerns before this council, that they will do so with respect, that all here will be treated with dignity. We are grateful for being here in this great city and this great country. We pray that thou bless our leaders of the United States, that they will be directed to do those things thou have done. And as we have this past weekend paid honor to our servicemen and women, we pray that thou bless those who are now serving our great country. May we show the proper honor and respect to them for the freedoms that we enjoy. And we pray, Father, that thou be here to direct the affairs of this meeting, and we do it in the name of thy Son and our Savior, Jesus Christ. Amen.
Amen. Thank you, sir. Appreciate it. For being standing for the pledge of allegiance, Mr. Schmidt, would you lead us? Please join me.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Next is comments from the public. I have no speaking cards. Anyone in the public like to speak to this particular item? I don't see anybody that's not, well, yeah, there's one that's not, maybe not staff. Okay, seeing none, we'll move on. Request from Councilmember Ed Lawson to reconsider an action item, an action taken at the regular meeting of May 14, 2012 regarding approval of Regional Emergency Operations Center REOC and the Regional Emergency Communications Center REC, First Amendment inter local agreement and occupancy agreement. So we just need to, do we need to vote on this to reconsider? Is that what it is? Check.
Yes, sir.
Okay. Any questions about this particular item?
Yeah.
Go ahead. Go ahead, Ron.
Not at all. Just curious what the issue is.
Okay. Steve?
Mayor, members of the council, Steve Driscoll, Assistant City Manager, Acting City Manager for the record. Your action in your last meeting on this agreement, there was some discussion that in Chapter 9.1 of the agreement, that it appeared that there was inappropriate language or was not enough language in it, where it talked about occupancy of the Communication Center, then driving the dollar values that the three agencies would in fact then owe. And there was concern, and staff was agreeing originally with that, that it needed to add the language "Operations Center" in addition to the Communication Center. You voted to amend 9.1 and then, as part of your approval. After your work, the attorneys for the three agencies got together to review the language and determined that the language in 9.1 was in fact correct as written, in that it was talking about, once the Communication Center was occupied by the dispatch function, then the full effect of all of the financial agreement would be in place. That was defined in 9.2. So the legal counsel has asked this to be reconsidered so that it can be approved, the First Amendment can be approved as originally submitted, because Chapter 9.1 was in fact correct language, and Sparks's commitment, financial commitment, remains the same at 9 percent, and that is based on their use of the EOC only, not the Communication Center.
So then that comes up under 6.3?
Yes, sir.
Any other questions? Go ahead, Ron.
This is just not necessarily bringing back from Mr. Lawson as a councilperson, this is coming from staff requesting Mr. Lawson as a vehicle that this is coming back through?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay.
I'll make a motion. Will you reconsider?
Second.
Moved by Councilman Schmidt, seconded by Councilman Carrigan to reconsider this item. Any further discussion? Seeing none, please vote. Passed unanimously. Okay, let's move on to approval of the agenda. Anybody want to take anything out of board? Mr. Carrigan.
Just a question, are we going to conduct a labor relations?
No.
Okay.
Is that right, Steve? We're not? No.
Then I'll make a motion that we amend, or approve the agenda as written?
Do I have a second? Mr. Schmidt.
Second.
Sorry. Moved by Councilman Carrigan, seconded by Councilman Schmidt to approve the agenda as outlined by staff. Any further discussion? Seeing none, please vote. 3.1, consideration and possible approval of the minutes of the regular Sparks City Council Meeting of May 14, 2012, and the budget public hearing on May 15, 2012. Any missions or corrections, deletions? Not looking for a motion. Mr. Smith.
Move to approve.
Do I have a second? Ms. Ratty.
Second.
Moved by Councilman Smith, seconded by Councilwoman Ratty to approve the minutes of May 14 and the special public hearing of May 15 for budget. Any further discussion? Seeing none, please vote. Passed unanimously. Okay, 4.1, commendation. Ms. Moles, if you would come forward. This is supposed to be a surprise, but Adam Mayberry let the cat out of the bag. He's like a little...
Do with it.
I know that, but we have to give him a little, have to give him a little needle, right, Sally? Anyway, I'm sure everybody here knows that Sally will be retiring June 1st, after 23 and a half years, 20...
Sure.
Is that it? Okay. So we thought we'd do a little commendation for Sally. She didn't want a big hoopla party and all that going away stuff, so we thought we had to do something in recognition of your so many years that you've been with us. Anyway, commendation. Whereas Sally Moles, Executive Administrative Assistant in the City Manager's Office, began working for the City of Sparks November 21, 1988, and will retire on June 1, 2012. And whereas Sally has been a dedicated City of Sparks employee for 23 years, 6 months, and 2 weeks. And whereas Sally has worked with six mayors, yikes, 21 councilmembers, and seven city managers, wow, you're a survivor.
Yes, sir.
And whereas Sally has scheduled approximately 22,110 meetings, and has helped approximately 160,800 citizens. And whereas Sally has interpreted engineering language to English, and has shared knowledge, expertise, and guidance with many city employees and citizens. Now therefore, I, Gino R. Martini, Mayor of the City of Sparks, Nevada, do hereby proclaim June 1, 2012, as Sally Moles' Day, and join with city council in thanking Sally for her dedication, loyalty, and service to the city. Thanks, Sally. Okay, next is 4.2, presentation on the Mobile Outreach and Safety Team, MOST. Come on up and give us your names for the record.
For the record, after I work my way into the chair, Lieutenant Pete Proll of the Sparks Police Department.
My name's Randall Yorks. I'm the Coordinator of the MOST program from Northern Nevada Adult Mental Health Services.
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, I'd like to thank you for providing us a little bit of time to bring to you today some information regarding a new program that we are beginning, a cooperative program between our police department and Northern Nevada Adult Mental Health Services, which I think will add a great deal of benefit to the citizens of our community. What I'd like to do is present a brief PowerPoint, and then we'll take any questions that you may have. The goal and the mission statement of this program is to enhance the safety of our community by bringing the opportunity for recovery directly to those who suffer from mental illness. Pardon me. Essentially, what the program seeks to do is intervene with persons who have mental illnesses or difficulties, so that they do not get to the point where they require hospitalization or end up in the legal system. The advantages to this type of intervention are clearly evident in reduced calls for service, reduced cost, and reduced demands on services in several areas in the system. The people that will staff the program are two staff members from Northern Nevada Adult Mental Health Services, Lisa Latham and Randy Hill. They are licensed clinical social workers. There are six volunteer officers at the police department who volunteered to participate in this program, one sergeant, and myself. We will be the police staff. It will be assigned as a collateral duty, and each of the officers is looking very forward to this program. Essentially, NAM's personnel will ride with police officers in the same capacity as citizen ride-alongs until such time as their skills and abilities are needed. The persons that this program seeks to help are primarily those with mental illness. Examples are schizophrenia, bipolar disorder. There's a very lengthy list of afflictions that we hope to help people with. The authority that these people bring with them includes the ability to initiate legal holds if necessary. They can also provide basic referral services, continuing follow-up with client contacts, collection of data to better determine which way to guide the program, and additionally to educate the community as a whole to the benefits of the program. How is contact made? Contact can come during any routine patrol call. It can come as referrals from within our department. If an officer encounters a situation and they believe a person could benefit from contact with this program, they can make a referral internally, and that will then be doled out to either Lisa or Randy, and they will do follow-up with those people. Requests from people's family members made through the police department, members of the community can also be referred through us to this team. On occasion, sometimes the team may make only a one-time contact. But if that does not, if the one-time contact does not resolve the issue, they may plan to see the client on a regular schedule over a course of weeks or days as necessary. Again, the hope here is to reduce or alleviate more expensive and disruptive levels of care. Most team members are educated on community resources and where to guide the client for assistance. They know the process for admission to Deanie Townsend and West Hills Hospitals. These are things that police officers are not always 100% comfortable with. Anything that we can do to make this process more smooth for the persons we come in contact with is of benefit. They also know how to reach case managers within the system. Rather than initiating a legal hold, there may be other methods of helping these persons that we can apply, rather than initiating a legal hold and detaining a person. If we can do that, that would be a benefit to everybody. They also have access to NAM's electronic files, which has information in it that police officers may not be able to access, that may allow an intervention to proceed in a different manner, other than, let's say, a legal hold, which would again be of benefit to the client and everyone involved. The MOST program has been working with the Reno Police Department for a little more than three years. During calendar year 2011, data that they have collected shows that they had more than 700 client contacts, with significant spikes occurring in the last quarter of the year, October, November, and December. What does that mean to a certain City of Sparks? In the calendar year 2011, Sparks Police went to many calls that dealt with mental issues. The way we classify our calls, two examples that I've provided for you here are simply what's termed "mental," which can be a broad variety and definition of calls for service, can include a great many things, but that's just how we classify it in our computer system. There were 370 of those calls. There were also 89 attempted suicide calls. Those sorts of calls can result, obviously, in police contact, but police officers may not necessarily be the person who can provide the most help to that person. Many people don't like a uniform. If they can speak to someone other than that, they're more comfortable and it works better for everyone. What this would do is provide us with at least 459 opportunities to have a more positive impact for the citizens and people in our community, and we believe that will be of great benefit as this program continues. Sparks Police Officers have been scheduled to ride along with Reno Police Department officers to see how the program works firsthand, so that when the program is brought live to our city, they have a feel for how the program will work, because they've witnessed it in person. The first date for a ride-along with NAM's and our officers is scheduled currently for June 7, so we look to begin this program in approximately a week and a half. We believe it will be very beneficial, and we're looking forward to bringing this program to our community.
Is that it?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Questions, Ron, Smith?
Lieutenant, you know, it seems to me that if they're riding with you all the time, I mean, are there that many calls that you're bound to get some that day, or is it something that you'd call them and say, "Meet is at this address," or how does it work?
It could be, there are a couple of different ways. If they're out working with us that day, they can go to a call that has this sort of overtone to it. There could also be a referral where they do follow-up. In other words, we receive information perhaps about a person having difficulty at an address with whatever the case may be. They would then conduct follow-up on assigned days and go out and make contact with those citizens at other times.
Okay.
So the information can be compiled and given to them, so if they're not there that day, it can be followed up on a following scheduled day.
Okay. So I've been on a ride-along before, and if they call an officer for whatever reason, it's usually the, whoever's closest to what's going on. So if he's in another car, probably go over there as a backup type thing?
That's correct. They could be used as a cover officer, or they could simply be, if they're at a greater distance and logistics requires too close for officers to go initially, that officer and the NAM's worker can supplant or replace that other officer once the situation's calmed down and continue forward there. They can be brought over into the call, and officers can make that request anytime they need to.
I think it's a great addition. I really do. Thank you.
Ms. Ratty.
I'm just curious how it's going to, excuse me, cooperate or collaborate with the Triage Center.
Listen. As far as...
Come on down, please. I'm sorry, just give your name for the record, so we have a...
I'm Lisa Latham, I'm a Mobile Outreach Safety Team member. I work for the Triage Center also.
Okay.
And as far as I know, they're going to be working hand-in-hand with NAM's. Are you talking about dropping over, like, for CPCs, the Civil Protective Custodies, like the officers are now bringing them to the Triage Center for...
Yes. My understanding that one of the benefits of the Triage Center was that it would free up some officer time, because they would no longer be reliant...
Have to take them to the jail?
Well, or have to stay at the Triage Center.
Correct.
Once that call was pretty much finished from a law enforcement standpoint, but still required some supervision, so...
Reno, same thing. We bring them, a lot of times if we're not sure what to do with them, if we can't get them services right then, we take them to the Triage Center, and that's kind of an immediate fix, and then you have case managers in the Triage Center that can help those people right at that time, or the next day. It's just kind of more of a stabilization type of a place. So it works rather well. So we're getting them out of their situation into a more calm situation.
Okay. And then, just one more?
Go ahead.
Do you, then do some follow-up in case management with some of your chronic faults?
We do. Wednesdays, Randy Hill and I work together usually, and we take a state car and we go, provided that the situation's not dangerous, but most of the time we go in the car and then we follow up with the people that we have on our list. And sometimes it's every week, because these people need contact every week. And then they stabilize, and then we kind of back off, and that's usually how it goes.
Great. I think it's fabulous.
Thanks.
Thank you. Mr. Schmidt?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. My question just comes with funding. Where's funding coming from for the program? That's completely with the state. Lisa and Randy are state employees, as I am, and all the supervision chain of command is through us. Of course, we're cooperatively with the Reno Police and soon Sparks Police to make sure there's a smooth sailing, but it's really no cost to the cities.
Well, just want to go ahead and clarify your comments. You said there's seven police officers volunteered for the program, or seven officers are volunteering the program. That volunteer program is that they're doing this on their time at work. They're not coming in outside the schedule. It's their time at work, they're paying for their duties and stuff, they're just assuming additional duties along with that.
Yes, sir.
Okay. Just wanted to clarify. Thank you.
Okay, any other questions? Thanks. Appreciate it. Appreciate the update. Let's move on with consent items. Anybody want to move any, or call any consent items? 5-1 through 5-8. If not, looking for a motion. Mr. Smith?
Move to approve consent items 5.1 through 5.8.
Do I have a second? Ms. Ratty?
Second.
Have a motion by Mr. Smith, seconded by Councilwoman Ratty, to approve the consent items 5-1 through 5-8. Any further discussion? Seeing none, please vote. Passed unanimously. Let's move on to general business items. Consideration and possible confirmation of the appointment of Ed Lawson to the EDON Board of Directors. Mr. Carrigan?
Move for approval.
Do I have a second? Mr. Smith?
Second.
Moved by Councilman Carrigan, seconded by Councilman Smith, to approve Mr. Lawson as our liaison to EDON Board of Directors. Any further discussion? Seeing none, please vote. Passed unanimously. Thank you. 6.2, consideration and possible authorization to pay the membership with the National League of Cities and to pay the memberships with the Nevada League of Cities. And Ms. Bellis, for fiscal year 12/13. Mr. Carrigan?
One question. In the analysis, it said that we had voted on joining the National League of Cities. I don't remember doing that.
Yeah, I didn't either.
I thought we just, we had a big discussion and a kind of a little debate up here about joining the Nevada League of Cities, but I don't remember doing that, so did we do that, and I just forgot?
Yeah, and I had the same thought, too, and I went back and I did look at the May, Adam Mayberry, Community Relations Manager for the Record. I went back to the April 9 city council agenda and looked at the staff report, and the memberships that you approved for the budget did in fact include the National League of Cities. This particular...
Wow, okay.
Yeah.
I don't either. Okay. Mr. Schmidt?
Question, maybe we approved it in the budget, but at the time that we were discussing the League of Cities, was there anything that this council brought up to do that with the National League of Cities at that time, was in discussion? It may have been on paper to go in and do it, but I don't remember seeing that money on there, even during the budget process for the National League of Cities.
Yeah, I can't answer that specifically, Councilman, other than to say that the memberships, you know, we had a list of memberships, EDON, the Chamber, et cetera, and we did have an item on there for the National League of Cities, and for a total of $7,816, the National League did indicate that they would give us a 15% discount. So that would bring it down, and I just discovered that today, and that would bring it down to $6,644, for a total of the National League plus the Nevada League of $24,534 instead of $25,706. But this agenda item does include paying the membership dues for the Nevada League of Cities and the National League of Cities, as well as an appointment to the Nevada League of Cities Board of Directors and the Nevada League of Cities Legislative Committee.
Doesn't mean we have to approve both, though, does it?
No, absolutely not. The appointments, we're recommending to be six-months appointments, beginning July 1, and then when this body meets in January, to, you know, outline your next board and commission appointments, that then it would be an annual term.
I think that's in November this year.
Is it November? Okay. Okay, whenever, whenever that occurs.
Ms. Ratty?
Can you just remind me?
Sure.
You have to be a member of the Nevada and able to be a member of the National, or is it the other way around?
Correct. You have to be a member of the Nevada League of Cities to be a member of the National League.
But it doesn't work the other way?
Correct.
Okay.
Mr. Smith?
And I'd like to see the tapes or something from that meeting, because I don't think we approved the National League, just the Nevada League.
Okay, and then that, that's...
And I mean, again, if we don't want to approve the National League or whatever, we don't have to, I don't think. Ms. Ratty?
Well, and I guess that would be my point. So that action was putting it into the budget, but there, we always knew that there'd be a follow-up action on whether or not to join. We can have staff go back and look it up if we want to, but if we don't want to join, we have the opportunity to do that now, and I'm not particularly...
Whatever the pleasure of this council is, I mean, we've, the money is budgeted for both leagues. This item will allow you to essentially approve the membership dues for the National League and the Nevada League, or one or the other, and then that would be payable upon the beginning of fiscal year July 1.
Okay.
Ms. Carrigan?
As well as the appointments.
As far as the two appointments go?
Yes, sir.
Do they have to be the same person?
They could be the same person, or they could be different individuals.
Okay.
And on the Legislative Committee, it could also be a staff person. Looking at the Legislative Committee for the League, a majority of them are elected officials, so it would, you know, my recommendation would be that it would be an elected member, and then with the caveat that if you can't attend, you know, I could attend in your place.
Mr. Schmidt?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Adam, I think there's one area that we've missed the boat on, all this stuff with Nevada and National League of Cities, and that is the auxiliary cost to this membership. We don't even have enough money. We approved Nevada League of Cities, and let's say that half of this council decides to go to Elko in October, we don't even have enough in our travel budget to do that. So I'm very concerned about going to the National League of Cities. I'm on the advisory board of the National League of Cities because of my time that I've spent with the National League of Cities. In order to want to attend to one of their meetings, you know, would consume, you know, a third of our entire travel budget, so if we have, if we've spent this money on the National League of Cities, we don't have anything to follow up with, with action. We've just, you know, shot ourselves on the foot. So I would much rather if we approved the Nevada League of Cities and then asked for that money that's been in the budget for the National League of Cities to be transferred over into the travel and education budget. So if you're going to take advantage of the Nevada League of Cities, or you still want to go to the National League of Cities, you can still go without being a member, you know, you just pay $100 more for the conference than you do for being a non-member, or maybe it's $200 now more. But, you know, if you're going to support whoever wants to be on the Nevada League of Cities as Board of Directors, there has to be some money available for them to go ahead and to get to the meetings, because only half of them are the north, or...
Yeah, I would agree with that. Moving that money to Nevada League of Cities for education adds up. I'm not sure that I would agree with having that money available for someone to go to National League of Cities if we're not a member of National League of Cities, and someone wants to go, that should be on their own dime then. Ms. Ratty?
So, two points. Following up to the question about, could it be one person or two people or combination? In looking at it from the Government Affairs perspective, which is sort of how we got back into talking about the League of Cities, it was our feeling from the Government Affairs Committee that for this first year, it would be helpful to have the consistency of having the board member also be the Legislative Affairs Committee member, just so that we knew that that communication was consistent. So from a Government Affairs Committee, that would be our recommendation, that it be one person and that it be the mayor. And then regarding moving the National League, so I'm perfectly okay with not joining the National League of Cities, so I don't, it doesn't sound like anybody's particularly feeling like that's the thing to do at this point. My question is, we swept the travel and education budget when money got tight, and we did that when we swept the travel and education budgets of all departments. So where are we now in terms of city employees being able to use city resources to travel to conferences?
I don't think so.
And that might be a better question... And that might be a better question for Steve.
I think we added $250,000 line item for that.
We've got some educational things.
I know we're doing some education things, but that doesn't mean that people are traveling to conferences.
Yeah, that's using the money. Travel and education money being used for that, $250,000 being used for that. The last report I saw had a lot of travel in it.
Are we able to do the travel that we need to do, Steve?
Steve Driscoll, for the record, in your budget that was approved, there were two things. One, there has been small replenishments of travel and training into budgetary line item detail, and more importantly, the Learning and Development Fund, which stands alone and is reviewed between the manager and the HR department for specific things, both for individuals and groups of employees. And so those are two opportunities where we are now traveling and training again, or training again, of which some of it requires travel.
And is it sufficient to meet the needs at this point, or is it a toe back in the water?
Well, it certainly, there are many more opportunities than we are even able to take advantage of now, but we believe that this has been a good start in these times, and the utilization in the last cycle had some wonderful results, and we're believing that with, there's a slight, a bit more money this time, and because of our aggressive management of it, we believe strongly that that will continue to be very positive for the city and positive for our employees.
And I'm sure you see my line of thought here, that I just don't want to do anything for the council that is out of step with what we're doing for employees in terms of paying for travel. So it absolutely makes sense to me that the board member that's approved has the ability to go to board meetings. I mean, that makes absolute sense, and then I'm not sure if the $7,000 would cover the costs of all of us going to a conference. You know, I'm not really sure that it's Elko. So it's mileage and the Red Lion or whatever, but...
I did talk to, emailed Jeff Kronk earlier this morning in anticipation of the question on travel and training, and it, I don't recall what the figures were, but it's about a combined total of about $14,000 for the council travel and training budget. That's about what it is now.
Without moving the...
Correct. So without moving that. So we could certainly add the National League funding into that travel, and that would be an add to that pot.
Or we could just not approve the National League of Cities and save the city some money, because we have $14,000 that we don't necessarily have plans for at this point, nor a system to allocate that I'm aware of. Do we, Steve, do we have a system to allocate that travel money?
Again, Steve Driscoll, for the record, the budget that is given to the council for these things are of their discretion to use, and you have done, you know, a very good job of marshaling that over the last couple of cycles. As far as if it was the council's pleasure to add to that and to put any kind of, you know, non-restriction or restriction on it, would certainly be at the pleasure of the council. It is something that you could also determine at this time to use what you have allotted already and go where you feel is necessary as individuals or as a group, and at such time later in the year that if there was a business need, that again, working with the manager and the finance director, you could always revisit that on an item-by-item basis.
Okay.
Okay.
Beyond that, I think I'm taking us off the agenda item, because we're really not talking about our entire travel and training budget. We're talking about approving these memberships.
Mr. Carrigan.
Yeah, if there isn't any more questions, I'm ready to make a motion.
Okay.
I'd like to move to authorize the city manager to pay the membership in the Nevada League of Cities and municipalities for fiscal year 2012-13, and to appoint Mayor Martini to serve on the Board of Directors and the Legislative Subcommittee.
Can you also throw Adam in there as the alternate on the Legislative Subcommittee?
Sure.
In case I can't make it, is that...
Sure.
Mr. Smith.
Second.
We have a motion, and a motion by Mr. Carrigan, seconded by Mr. Smith. Questions? Mr. Ratty.
Just going for a second.
Okay. Any further discussion? Seeing none, please vote. Passed unanimously. Thank you. Okay. Thanks, David, for being here. Appreciate it.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thank you all.
Next is 6.3, possible reconsideration, oh, we're not, oh, yeah, we are going to do this. Possible reconsideration of an action on May 14, 2012, City Council Agenda Item entitled "Presentation Discussion and Possible Approval of Regional Emergency Operations Center and Regional Emergency Communications Center, First Amendment Interlocal Agreement and Occupancy Agreement." Mr. Driscoll.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Members of the council, Steve Driscoll, Assistant City Manager and Acting City Manager, for the record today. I believe that the primary question regarding this item was answered before, but I'm prepared for any other questions.
Questions? Mr. Smith.
This is, this concerning Par Boulevard, right? That facility up off of Par Boulevard?
It's the one on Spectrum, which is the combination of the operations, the Emergency Operations Center on the bottom floor and the emergency regional dispatch on the second floor.
I just wanted to make sure it had nothing to do with NDOT's attempt for new building and a new center. This is for our existing center.
Nothing to do with that Fast Track Center.
Okay. Any other questions? Looking for a motion. Mr. Carrigan.
Yeah, move to approve the First Amendment Interlocal and Occupancy Agreement for the REOC and RECC without the corrections identified at our May 14 meeting.
Mr. Smith.
Second.
Move by Councilman Carrigan, seconded by Councilman Smith, to approve this agenda item as outlined by staff. Any further discussion? Seeing none, please vote. Passed unanimously. Comments from the city council and city manager. Mr. Driscoll.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I do have a couple of announcements. Two appointments to the Civil Service Commission will expire on June 30. Each appointment is for a three-year term. There is also a vacancy on the commission for a term which will expire June 30, 2014. Two appointments to the Parks and Recreation Commission will expire June 30. Each appointment is for a three-year term. If you're interested in serving on a commission, please complete a volunteer application available on the city's website, www.cityofsparks.us. Click on City Services, then on Volunteering slash Get Involved, and then on the Volunteer Application. Thank you.
Is that it, Steve? Okay. Anyone else? Go ahead, Mike.
Yeah, I just wanted to get on the record. I'll be missing the Monday joint meeting. I've got jury duty.
I think you worked that out on purpose.
I'm not sure which one I'd rather be at, to tell you the truth.
Mr. Schmidt.
I will also be missing Monday's joint meeting with great regrets.
Anyone else? Comments from the public? Anyone in the public would like to speak? Now, I know there's nobody but staff here. All right, seeing no further business, we're adjourned.
Okay, I'll call the order of Sparks Redevelopment Agency Meeting of Tuesday, May 29. The roll call, please.
Chairman Smith.
Here.
Agency Secretary Powers.
I'm here. Members Ratty.
Here.
Lawson, absent. Martini.
Here.
Carrigan.
Here.
Schmidt.
Here.
Chief, Acting Chief Administrator Officer Driscoll.
Here.
Agency Attorney Adams.
Here.
Governor Quorum.
Okay. I will open it up to the public. Would anybody like to speak at this time? Seeing none, we'll bring it back to the agency. Number three, recommendation to approve the minutes of the...
Move to approve the agenda.
Huh? I'm sorry, approve of the agenda.
Move to approve, Mr. Chair.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion, a second. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, passes unanimously. Recommendation to approve the minutes of our meeting of April 23, 2012, and the budget public hearing of May 15, 2012.
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion, a second. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, passes unanimously. Number four, report of claims and bills for April 5, 2012 through May 9, 2012.
Moved to approve.
Second.
We have a motion, a second. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Comments from the agency?